I'll call the meeting to order. And so, all trustees who are currently serving are here. We'll be talking about trustee Duggar's position later in the meeting. And so with that, we have roll call of everyone except trustee Duggar, I believe. Okay, so now we stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. There are copies of the agenda and the attachments if anyone needs one. Are there any requests from any trustee to revise the agenda in any fashion? Seeing none, then we'll continue and follow along as the agenda has been set in the published agenda. So the first order of business is under number 4A, which is to approve the Board of Trustees' regular meeting minutes from November 26, 2019. Does anyone have any changes that they'd like to make to those minutes? Seeing none, then is there a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of November 26? Moved by trustee Kendall. Is there a second? Second by trustee Altperson. All those in favor of approving the minutes from November 26 meeting, please indicate by raising your hand. And is that a hand up? Trustee McDonald? Okay. Yes, so that's unanimous. And now we move on to B, which is the regular meeting minutes from December 10, 2019. First, are there any changes that anyone would like to make? Seeing none, then is there a motion to approve the minutes from the December 10 board meeting? Moved by trustee Smith and seconded by trustee Service. All those in favor of approving the minutes from December 10 meeting, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Now we come to number 5A, which is public comment on non-agenda items. This is a time for anyone from the public who wants to provide us with information, let us know something that's going on in the district, anything that would impact the district. We ask you to, and we won't be discussing it later, we ask you to limit your comments to about three minutes. And if you have an unusual spelling of your name, spell your name so we get it correct in the minutes. And other than that, are there any public comments on non-agenda items? Thanks.
Good evening. Casey Blue, middle school teacher, Missoula Education Association. I just wanted to thank you all. I don't know if you're aware, sometimes we miss people when they're gone, but you allowed us to sweep, Brittany Kileman, Katie LaPointe and I, to sweep Superintendent Watson, HR Director, Rod, and TNL Director, Guest, away to the not-so-tropical tundra of Minnesota this last week. We went for an NEA Centers meeting, which was focused on our NIC cohort, our Network Improvement Committee. It was the seventh meeting for them, but Katie, Rob and I, it was our first time. So we've been working on teacher retention throughout our district, which I know Melanie has spoken to you about several times, and I think you've heard from Brittany Kileman as well on it. We've been working on the aim of teacher retention and learning how to run a NIC, improve the labor management collaboration, which is pretty strong within our district, and accelerate learning and collaboration across sites. We meet with Green Bay and Madison, Wisconsin. Thank you. Yeah, the snow got to me. It was a brilliant opportunity this week to share the successes of our mentoring program so far, the scope of work that we've taken on, as well as the potential we have to create even more success, and work that we can do to ensure the sustainability and institutionalization of this mentoring program. We've heard thank yous and success stories from both mentors and mentees, even last night when, during our work session. And we look forward to continuing to improve this program and welcome the chance to share our data and our stories with you. They're pretty compelling. Having a program like this that touches both new and experienced staff ensures that we have competent, quality educators in our classrooms that enriches the experience of students at all levels, and it's unique and important work that we do. We're truly excited that we have a board and an administration that value and embrace that work, and that we can work together on this vast project because it's truly awesome. So, thank you.
Thanks. Any other public comment on non-agenda items? Seeing none, then we'll move on to 6A, which are student trustee reports. We have two trustees present, I don't know if Seeley's want.
Yes, Seeley.
Okay, and then, okay, so we have more reports than people here, but thank you for being here for those of you who are here. So first, should we just start with Sentinel? And if I can just remind you guys to say your name, because we're being recorded and that helps the audience know who you are and which school you represent. So, thank you.
All right, I'm Isaac Odegaard from Sentinel High School. Hello, everyone. I hope your 2020 has been good so far. As Sentinel enters the new decade, we are beginning to prepare for finals. Sentinel's finals are being held on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday of next week, with each of the seven classes being allotted a two-hour period. Students are now working hard to prepare for finals, and the Spartan Ambassador Program is hosting their annual study day in order to help freshmen prepare for their first finals. This new decade is also bringing with it the long-awaited end to construction at Sentinel. Within the next few weeks, the final touches will have been made, and Sentinel will finally return to normal, an improved normal, that is. Also, at the end of 2019, Sentinel Student Government provided a large donation to the Sentinel Family Resource Center for Thanksgiving food supplies and sponsored three families for Christmas. In news concerning the performing arts, Allstate Jazz Band is taking place in Billings, and Sentinel's jazz band is sending four students who qualified to play and represent our school there. Sentinel's speech and debate had a meet at Frenchtown High School last weekend. The team took first in AA, being the only AA team there. Students performed especially well in public forum, where they took third, fourth, and fifth. Policy debaters also performed well, taking second and eighth in their event. So far, our basketball seasons have gone very well for both boys and girls. On Saturday night, both Boys and Girls Varsity played against Glacier Wolf Pack. Our Boys won 51-3, and our Girls won 61-53. Sorry, Boys won 51-35. Both teams are currently playing against Hell in the High. We wish them luck in their games. In other sporting news, Sentinel is also preparing to host the Jugbek Rocky Mountain Classic on this coming Friday through Saturday. Sentinel is proud to share that our own athletic director, Mr. Dane Oliver, has been honored with the award of Athletic Director of the Year by the Montana High School Association. And lastly, the Battle for the Golden Goat, the rivalry event between Sentinel High School and Hellgate High School, will take place on January 31st, with the Girls' Basketball Team playing at 6:00 PM and the Boys at 8:00 PM. The games will be played at the Adams Center at the University of Montana. We would like to encourage all of you to attend these games. I hope your winter break went well and that your new year continues successfully.
Hello, I'm Isis Ball. I'm the Big Sky High School Student Trustee. As far as student reports, finals week is next week. Students were given a study calendar to help them stay on track for studying for finals and make a plan if they are missing any assignments or need to improve their grades. On January 28th, the start of the new semester, we will be having a grade level assembly for all ninth through 11th graders to learn about requesting courses for the 2021 school year next year. There's also an informational event happening on February 5th for all incoming ninth graders. They'll learn how to register for classes and get a tour around the school and have an opportunity to meet teachers and learn about classes they might enjoy. That concludes the Big Sky Report. Thanks so much.
I, I'm filling in for Abe this evening. It's just serendipitous because I was thinking of Abe recently when his picture was in the Missoulian, either making a basket or keeping somebody else from making a basket, but it looked awesome. Unfortunately, he is unable to be at the meeting today because he's in a basketball game. So, he tells us that things are running smoothly at Hellgate. With winter sports in full swing, the Boys and Girls Basketball Teams are both off to a hot start. Boys winning all their games, Girls losing just one. Speech and Debate is also going and is headed to Butte this week. In Student Government, we are focusing on the upcoming Spirit Wars against Sentinel. That's what you were talking about, right? During lunch, members of Student Government are selling T-shirts and putting up posters, I'm imagining with goat pictures on them. In other student-led action at Hellgate, a group is working on putting in new drinking fountains around the school, as the condition of many drinking fountains at Hellgate is quite Abe's word, atrocious. Student artwork is a nice touch, now on display all over Hellgate in the new display cases that have been installed after construction. With the end of the semester right around the corner, Hellgate Clubs and athletics are all going great in the new year. Thanks, Abe.
Hi, Claire. We're calling via cellphone, so I'll put you on speaker now.
Okay.
Hi, Claire. We hope you have a report for us.
Let's see. So, Eric and I, Eric is not here. He's at ski practice, but him and I wanted to wish y'all Happy New Year. And with our new year, we have a new student teacher, Ms. George, and she's going to be co-teaching with Ms. Quinn and Ms. Messenger, so most of our English classes, so we're looking forward to that. To catch up with our Leos Club, we had a Christmas crate drying, and we had $470 raised, and we sent that to the Florida Lions Club, and they're going to use that money to buy tents and sleeping bags for the Hurricane Dorian victims. As far as our basketball season, we're in full swing, and this Friday, we play the Darby Tigers at home, and then on Saturday, we play Victor Pirates in Victor. Our ski club, so we have a high school, North Ski Club, and they just went to the Glacier Glide up in Whitefish this weekend, and they did pretty well, and that's their first race this year. And then they'll have another race this Sunday at our trails here at Seeley Lake. Our graphic design students have been doing their part to help out their school, their community, and the district, but by designing brochures and affirmative, they're doing like some curriculum pages for the district, so that's pretty cool. Their teacher is excited that they're getting back. And that's all I have.
Great. And I did see in the paper today that Owen Mercado was the 406 Montana Athlete of the Month from Seeley Swan, so congratulations to him too.
Thank you.
Thanks. And now we move on to the Superintendent's Report.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you had a wonderful holiday break and had time to spend with your family and friends. I just have a few items this evening, nothing major to report, but wanted to make sure that you all got the special invite for our strategic planning session. We've been working very closely with Montana School Boards Association to set up this strategic planning process, and Hatton has been communicating directly with them. And one of the things we've done is we've launched a survey, and that survey is available on our website in a couple of different spots, but we encourage all constituents, students, parents, staff members, community members, to take the survey. Hatton told me as of last week, there were 1,700 responses, but we're hoping to get twice as many than that, so. But the School Boards Association will be compiling the results of the survey, and they'll use those results to help guide our strategic planning process. Again, that link is on our website. I've been telling folks that I meet with about the link and just encouraging people to take the survey. One of the other things that I wanted to remind everyone is, our first session is next Thursday, that's January 23rd, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM in this room. We have, we've invited anybody, obviously it's open to the public, but we do have a cadre of folks that have committed to come to all three sessions. That includes teachers and parents and community members and principals. So, we've got, we tried to do a selection of each group to make sure we had folks from each sector, if you will, at each session. So, those folks have committed that they could be here for the all three sessions, and so that's sort of our core group of committee members. But obviously, the meeting is opening, open to the public, and we encourage all folks to attend. And our first session is next, as I said, next Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Also wanted to tell the Board that we have a press conference tomorrow at Cold Springs at 10:30, and that press conference is to announce the partnership that the Board entered into, that the lease partnership with the individual that will be doing the childcare center at Cold Springs. And so, that initiative is not only important to us, but it's also important to the Chamber of Commerce, and so the Chamber has set up a press conference. They'd like to announce that opportunity to expand childcare in our community, and so they've invited us to be part of that press conference tomorrow at 10:30 at Cold Springs. The last thing I'll just mention is, in speaking with Board leadership, we made the decision to move the March meeting, the second March meeting, so right now, it's scheduled for March 24th. We would like to move that to March 31st, which is that following week, for a couple of reasons. Number one, March 24th is right after spring break, and so we thought an extra week would be helpful in preparing the agenda. And then the other reason is because on March 25th, we have a strategic planning session, and so we wanted to move the Board meeting to the 31st. And that's all I have.
Thanks. And then, do you want to introduce Hatton, or should...
Oh, yes. So, Hatton's going to spend just a few minutes talking about the document that's in front of you, the colorful document in front of you. This is our Achievement for All document, and Hatton and several others have spent a lot of time putting this together. Basically, what this does is it sort of reports out on all of the achievements from our strategic plan from the last five years. So it's, as it says on the front, a five-year in review. Hatton, it was important for Hatton to make sure you saw this before it went public on the website, so I know she wants to talk just a little bit about it.
Thank you so much. So, before I talk about the report, I want to give a few acknowledgements. First, to all of our district staff, whether that's classified, certified, or administrators who have actually done the work to make these accomplishments possible, as well as our Cabinet, who has done a lot of that significant leadership and helped compile the actual report, you know. It's not just me saying what I think we accomplished. We all together provided the input about how well we think we met our five-year goals. So you'll see in some cases, we were spot-on or exceeded the goal, and in some cases, we had to say we're still working on it, or we didn't quite make the mark. I also want to acknowledge Tracy Long in the Superintendent's Office, who did the graphic design. I think it's exceptional, and it represents our district really well, and she worked very hard on it. So what you'll see are the benchmarks that you've seen in every single one of our annual reports that we've published for the past five years. The benchmarks were included in the original strategic plan. And then, in the white text in the center, is our estimation of what we've done to accomplish progress towards that benchmark. And it's split up into the four areas that our original strategic plan was split up into, learning, operations, talent, and environment. And if you have questions, you can certainly ask them tonight, but it's a rich document. You probably need to take time to digest it. We thought this was a really important thing to show our community, so that we're maintaining our accountability with the community in terms of what we said we would do, and it helps us establish that foundation of where we are in our current reality as we launch those strategic planning meetings next week.
Any questions for Hatton? As she indicated, there's a lot of information in here. I just have one question. Is it easy to identify areas where there's continued growth that's needed, or is this, is it a mixture of reporting all the progress we've made, where areas where we might still be working on it, it's a little bit hard to identify?
There are certainly ones that I could highlight for you verbally now, but we didn't color-code them. We reported on them in exactly the same linear order as they appeared in the original strategic plan, so we didn't revise the order within which we reported them based on how much progress we made or whether we considered them completed. Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Any public comment? Seeing none. I think at some point, we'll probably revisit this once everyone's had a chance to take a look at it.
We will be, it's live on our website now in the calendar section, so that if members were going to look for the agenda for tonight's public board meeting, they would see a link to this document. We didn't include the color one in your packets, just to save some toner. And we'll be placing it more prominently on the front page of our district homepage tomorrow, along with our infographic. So, in terms of sharing it with the community, we imagine the website, it may get mentioned in the Superintendent's blog, but certainly it'll be mentioned as part of the strategic planning process.
So, thank you for all the reports. We now move on to the Consent Agenda, and it's an elementary action item, which is to acknowledge the MCPS students attending other schools in the district. And because it's on the consent agenda, it means that it's something we see on a regular basic basis. It's something that is usually not involving much conversation. However, any trustee can pull anything off the consent agenda if anyone wants to have a more robust conversation. So with that being said, the recommendation is that the trustees acknowledge the attached list of elementary students requesting to attend other districts, and you'll notice the word "acknowledge" because we really have no ability to prevent them from going to other districts. But we do want to acknowledge them, and I think pursuant to state law, we do report this information out. So, is there a motion that, do we need a motion, Pat? Do you know?
Just to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. So, with that being said, is there a motion from a K-12 trustee to approve the item on the consent agenda? Moved by trustee Lorenzen. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Smith. As I indicated, there won't be any discussion by the Board, but we do take public comment. Seeing none, then all K-12 trustees who are voting in favor of the motion to accept the, to approve the consent agenda, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all K-12 trustees. Then we move on to old business under personnel negotiations and policy. The first item is to approve the second reading of the Revised Board Policy 2450, which is Recognition of American Indian Peoples' Cultures and Heritage. It's found on page 23, as the background indicates, we had considered it before. On first reading, there were recommendations from Board members to modify the language that's reflected in the policy that's on page 23. And the recommendation now, because there has been no public comment received, is to adopt the Revised Board Policy 2450. Is there a motion from any trustee to adopt the Revised Board Policy 2450? Moved by trustee Altperson. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee McDonald. Is there any board discussion? Trustee Kendall?
I think this is a typo, but it does say student may where. Shouldn't it say students?
Oh, we need S.
Yes, we do, I think.
Okay, we do.
That's it.
Very good proofing. And so, since it's not a substantive motion, but it's really just a correction, I don't think we need to revisit the motion or the second. So with adding in the S in the, in the headlight, head-lighted area is, and we have a second in motion. Any other trustee discussion? Seeing none. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of adopting the Revised Board Policy 2450, Recognition of American Indian Peoples' Cultures and Heritage, please indicate by raising your hand. That is unanimous as to all trustees present. Then we move on to the second reading of Revised, excuse me, Board Policy 8100, Transportation. Again, this is the second reading. It had been presented and considered by the Board on December 10th of last year. No public comment has been received, and therefore, the recommendation is that the trustees adopt the Revised Board Policy 8100. Is there a motion to do so? Moved by trustee Wake. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Decker. Is there any board discussion? Since we had discussed it in the past, seeing none. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of adopting Revised Board Policy 8100, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Then we move on to three, which is approve the second reading of Board Policy 7270, which is Grants. And I want to again thank Pat for the work that you did in crafting the language in this new board policy. And again, it was presented for review and discussion by the Board in November of last year and has been posted for public comment, and no public comment has been received. Therefore, the recommendation is that the trustees adopt Board Policy 7270, Grants. Is there a motion to do so? Moved by trustee Kendall and seconded by trustee Service. Is there any board discussion? Other than, I do want to thank Pat and his staff again, because it was, it was a policy we're missing, and I'm glad we have it covered. Any public comment? Seeing none. Then all trustees in favor of adopting Board Policy 7270, Grants, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Now we move on to new business, which A1 is to discuss the Budget and Election Calendar, which is found on page 27. Excuse me. I was trying to finish my sentence before I sneezed, but that didn't work out. And so, this is for information at this point, right, Pat? And so, I think you're going to walk us through the relevant deadlines and the filing deadlines.
Exactly.
Thank you. So, page 27 has the election and budget calendar, notable dates, and then the meeting dates there at the bottom. So the top section just identifies some of the statutory deadlines and dates that are at play. The, I'll just highlight a few. First bullet point under election date shows the December 12 through March 26 period of time for trustee candidates to file for election. And then, the, down a little bit further, the April 2 deadline is a deadline for withdrawal of candidacy and for write-in candidates. And so, the Revised Meeting Date of March 31st, that Dr. Watson talked about, fits in pretty well here, because it'll give us a little more time to determine what candidates have filed and that type of thing. The, May 5th, of course, is the election day, and May 29th is the deadline to canvas ballots and reorganize the Board. The meeting, regular meeting is scheduled on May 25th, which would be the date we'd recommend to do that. So, the last legislative session, they provided some more time, so this is a good thing. We can perform this function with the Board at a regularly scheduled board meeting. The budget dates, the only thing I'll point out, those are deadlines. August 20th is the date that the trustees must meet to consider budgeted information on or before this date. What we've done in the past is had a special board meeting to do this, and the August 20th falls on a Thursday. And I think last year, we scheduled a special board meeting and maybe canceled the regularly scheduled meeting, but I think that's just down the road. But these are the 20th and adopt on, no later than the 25th is the primary dates to consider there. February 11th, you'll see the agenda topics to consider at the next few board meetings. The 11th would be the Budget Amendment Resolution. We're talking about part of that tonight, the proclamation, and then the... We're talking about part of that tonight, the proclamation, and then the, the resolution for the trustee elections in the elementary and the high school. And then the 25th would be the, if, if necessary, the levy election resolution for the general fund for elementary and high school. On the next page, page 28, the, you'll see the March 31st meeting date rather than March 24th, and it's listed as an and/or with a special board meeting on April 2nd. The, the 31st should work well to, to perform those, those functions. And otherwise, that, those are sort of the, the dates that we identified. We're working on putting together a three-ring binder for trustees that'll include budget information, including these, this, this calendar and any other information that we look at or have looked at during board meetings. So you'll have that at your disposal to look at in a, in a common location. So that'll be coming soon. That's all I had.
Any questions for Pat? As you know, we'll be discussing budget questions for a while until it's adopted in August. No questions? It's information only, but any public comment? Seeing none. Then Pat, you're also going to explain about the budget projections, and I, I know this is quite preliminary at this point, just to kind of give us a preview.
Exactly. Very much so. Thank you. So page 29, very preliminary. We haven't had our second enrollment count, which is the first week in February. So what, what's reflected here are the projections based upon estimates of our February enrollment count. And what we do is look at our October count and compare the prior year's change from the October to the February enrollment count to extrapolate what that, that might look like. So two factors at play really for these projections, the 1.83% inflationary increase to the school funding formula components, and then a pretty serious bump in enrollment on the, the elementary side. So just from a projection standpoint, the A and B, K-6 up 18, the A and B 7, 7th and 8th graders up 177. And then on the 912 side, using A and B averaging, the high school enrollment would be down 41, actually down 90, but three-year averaging helps us even that out. So for purposes of these projections, the 1.6 million increase in the elementary is related again to that inflationary increase that the legislature approved in 2017, and the enrollment bump, the A and B calculation. So looks better in the elementary and the high school, as would be expected based upon those enrollment or A and B numbers, enrollment numbers. Otherwise, our staff benefit projections are really tied to last year projections, which we'll update for our next go-around after we have the early February enrollment counts. So preliminary look right now, but not a bad look in particular in the elementary.
Thanks. Any questions for Pat? Trustee?
In the elementary, how come there's not additional classroom staff listed in the cost section?
Yeah, good question. And, and part of that is, we're experiencing that enrollment increase now. So, so part of that staffing is remember the A and B counts are a year late. So, so we're planning and, and have planned for those numbers through this year's budget and through potential budget amendments that we look at on another agenda item. So really, in a way, the, the, the kids are here now. And so, and we're addressing it now, but it doesn't mean later in the budget cycle that we wouldn't have classroom staff in the mix. But early on, this is where we're at.
And just a little more elaboration. You'll recall that at the start of the year, we did add several staff, sort of, I won't say in the 11th hour, but Dave would probably classify it in the 11th hour, we added staff at several grade levels based on increased enrollment. So we had probably, I'm, I'm just gonna guess about 60 more kindergarteners than we, than we expected, and those were some sections we added. We also added an 8th grade teacher the first week of school. So the, some of that additional staff's already been added.
And, and really to your point too, when we get into this, we'll identify that staffing. We just haven't, because that is part of the budget going forward, if that makes sense. Because it wasn't part of this current year FY20's staffing projections. It is right now. So that is something we'll add to the mix.
Yeah. Any other questions for Pat? Seeing none. It's information only. Any public comment? Seeing none. Then we move on to the urban renewal district tax increment financing remittance, which we've talked about. It's a bit complicated, so let's, let's talk about it again. We, we're getting some money, right? Stuff like that.
That's right. And you guys are getting to be proficient at the TIF remittance world. So, and, and really to that end, we did have two TIF remittances in the high school last year and one in the elementary. And so this is another remittance that, that is available for the, the board to use in, in the limited ways under state statute, but definitely great timing for us. The, the way the remittance works is that the city was looking at a 750,000 remittance in favor of their budget, which then requires all taxing jurisdictions within those renewal districts to get their proportionate share. And so attached on page 30 is some of the, the URDs that are at play, and then the total of remittance from those URDs. So this is a memo from the MRA that helps, helps spell that out. It doesn't necessarily address, well, it doesn't address where the funds are going, but the agenda item does as far as we're concerned. So the elementary, you would see 493,074 as a TIF remittance, and then the high school, In the next two action items, we've recommended the allocation of that remittance between the debt service fund and the general fund. And the way we came up with that allocation is to look at the life of the URD and how much was collected over that life for the general fund and the debt service fund respectively. And then within each of those URDs, we then allocated how much the URD was remitted to the district and separated it between the debt service and the general fund. So for the elementary, it, it, it means an $82,000 allocation to the debt service fund, which will directly reduce the obligation for, by that amount to serve the bonds, the bonded indebtedness. In FY19, we received 70, almost 75,000, meaning a total of 156,000 will be applied over those two years against the debt service obligation. So that's, that's a nice thing. The high school side had an airport TIF remittance plus the, the one that was part of the budgeting for the, the city of 80, totaling 87,900. And between that and then the allocation this year, that's 145, almost 146,000 that'll be used to reduce that bonded indebtedness obligation. So also a good thing. On the general fund side, we will be depositing the amounts, the remaining amount into the general fund reserves, which is really the locate, the other location for, under statute for deposit of those funds. The timing is great, as we'll see in the next agenda item, because we have a budget amendment available in the elementary fund. And so in effect, when we deposit into reserves, there's limited ways to pull that out, and one way is through a budget amendment. And so that'll be an opportunity, direct opportunity to use those, that a remittance, for the board to use the remittance. From an elementary standpoint, our general fund reserves are at 4.1%. They can be as much as 10. And I think I've mentioned before, where our reserves aren't terribly high. They're, they're pretty low. That's a $1.6 million. And on the high school, it's 3.8% or 1.1 million. So to the extent a portion of the remittance remains in reserves, it's, it's not a bad thing for us to have those reserves build up a little bit. The recommendation at this point is to, to approve the, the allocation of the remittance between the two funds. We received the agreement from, from the, the city, the, after the board agenda went out, so we'll, can share that with the board the next meeting, if that makes sense. It has a little more detail in terms of which taxing jurisdictions receive what, but it's, it's, there's only seven of them, two of which are us, the high school district, the elementary district, then you have Hellgate Elementary, you have the city, you have the county, you have a portion to the state and a portion to the transportation district. So those are the tax, check, taxing jurisdictions. And yeah, otherwise, a real positive thing for the school district.
Any general questions for Pat? We'll take them up as individual motions because one's elementary, one's high school. Trustee Smith?
Thanks. Yeah, I just got a couple of quick questions, and you'd think after 11 years, I might figure out school funding, but I haven't even begun to scratch the surface. I, I guess what I want to make sure that I understand is, what I've been asked is, is the impact to Joe taxpayer, if you will. And if I can understand this correctly, I know, or to me, it seems obvious that where, where the allocation is going to directly reduce the bond debt, that is in essence, in essence, paying some of the debt that the taxpayers took on when we approved the building bonds, the 155, 5 million for the two districts. The other portion, the portion going into the general fund, the question that was asked to me is, does our budget go up because of this, or does that displace money in the budget? And I think maybe some of this might be addressed with the next item, and if you want me to put off my question until then, I will.
No, it's fine. Okay. Yeah, so the, the reserves, any deposit to the reserves wouldn't change the budget amount. It wouldn't increase or decrease the budget amount. How those reserves get used in a way that reduces taxes is what is contemplated under the next agenda item. So if there's a budget amendment that's equivalent or equal to or more than this deposit to the reserves of the TIFs, which it is, then we'll pull those funds in as part of the budget amendment this year and offset real costs, and costs that would otherwise be levied. A really good example is the, the seatbelt obligation that's associated with the, the upgrade to our buses to add seatbelts. So that's something that we talked about when we agreed to add seatbelts and talked about funding of seatbelts. The, and so here, rather than funding it through a levy in the transportation fund next year to cover that burden, what we can do is incorporate it within the budget amendment and use those funds to cover that obligation and thereby not levy it through the transportation fund. And then in the past, when, last year, when we had TIF remittance, we did the same thing. We, we had the good fortune of two budget amendments, one elementary, one high school, and part of the funds were, were pulled from reserves, and, and the reserves were backfilled with the TIF remittance. And we used those funds to purchase O and M equipment that would otherwise be part of the building reserve levy. We purchased teaching and learning materials. We purchased instruments, fine arts instruments. So those types of purchases happen really in a way that, that helps us minimize or not have to levy, and very directly in the transportation fund and building reserve fund, but also within the general fund by virtue of the budget amendment.
So would it be fair to say that to the taxpayer that these, essentially because it's a TIF remittance, it's taxes they've already paid, that is coming back to them and kind of offsetting what might have been a future levy or tax?
That is fair to say. Yep.
Thanks.
Any other question, general questions for Pat? I just have one that just touches upon what you just said. So by state law, these dollar amounts have to go into specified accounts. But what we can do is then, because we've got that funding for certain things, that frees up money, say, for example, that we would have spent from the general fund on the seatbelts or else actually use a levy. So even though it's an indirect payment, it's still helping to offset costs that the district has. Is that, am I understanding?
That's exactly right.
Okay. So with that being said, there are two parts to this agenda item. The first is A, which is an elementary action item, which is to approve the remittance of the TIAF under the dollar percentages and dollar amounts listed under A. I'm not going to read them because they're kind of complicated, but I think there's no, no confusion about the percentages as they're listed, and they're accurate, right, Pat?
Yes.
Okay. So is there a motion to authorize that the portion of the remittance be deposited into the debt service fund and the general fund is authorized under state statute and be allocated in the manner in which is contained in the link, in the background language in the agenda item? Move. Pardon? You, say that again? You want to be?
I, I motion.
Okay, your motion. Is there a second? Thanks. And seconded by trustee Old Person. And so is there a board discussion? Thanks, Pat, for that explanation. I know this is a bit complicated, but thank you for working this out. So any public comment? Seeing none. Then all K-12 trustees in favor of the motion to authorize the portion of the remittance to be deposited as described in the recommendation, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all K-12 trustees. And then we move to the parallel recommendation concerning the, that the portion of the remittance be deposited in the debt service fund and the general fund is authorized by state statute in the high school. And again, I won't read the numbers or the percentages, but it's clear, nothing's changed. I mean, that's the amount that is being recommended.
That's what we're recommending.
Okay. So is there a motion to authorize the portion of the remittance be deposited into the debt fund, debt service fund and the general fund as described in the agenda? Moved by trustee Wake. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Service. Is there any board discussion? Trustee Smith?
I just want to make a quick comment that obviously I'm voting for this, but as Pat mentioned, we can't rely on these every year. We've had them two years in a row, which is great, and I would urge us to consider a budget reserve, a building reserve fund in the future.
Any other trustee discussion or comments? Any public comment? Seeing none. Then all trustees in favor of the motion to have a portion of the remittance of the TIF deposited into the debt service fund and the general fund as described in the recommendation, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Then we move to item number four, which is Resolution 2020-4E. Again, it's an elementary action item, and so this is pretty much very connected to what we were just discussing.
Typically, when we've done general fund budget amendments for enrollment increases, we've limited the budget amendment to the amount of direct state aid. So that's the amount of funds that come direct from the state, and we typically don't pull from reserves because of our limited reserve balances. Here, we have the opportunity, based upon an enrollment increase, comparing October of 18, which was used for our budget, October of 18, which was used for our, our budget calculations, compared to our October 19 enrollment calculations. That variance justifies, of 191 A and B justifies a, a budget. That variance justifies, 191 A and B justifies a budget amendment of 1.2 million in the elementary. And so what we're recommending as the budget amendment, even though there's capacity for more, is the amount that would be equal to the direct state aid of 443,609 plus the amount of the TIF remittance that we just talked about, the 410,931. And that totals the recommended budget amendment of 854,540 rounded. And so the attached resolution on page 32 is a proclamation resolution. So it's the board proclaiming the need for a budget amendment and identifying the amount and then identifying when the meeting would be had, which is February 11th, to adopt the budget amendment. So it's a two-step process. The board proclaims the budget amendment and sends the petition, which is attached on page 33, to the state superintendent. Once the petition's approved, we post that and publicize the notice of the meeting on the February 11th where the budget amendment would be adopted. And so at the time we present you with the resolution, we had identified the various account codes or expenditure object codes that we would recommend using the budget amendment funds for. As mentioned before, we'll have, we will incorporate certified staff and staffing in general will incorporate, what we've incorporated in the past has been teaching and learning materials and expenditures. And we'll have likely other ideas to share with the board at that time about where those budgeted funds would go, amendment funds would go. I've already alluded to one in the form of the seatbelt obligation. And so at this point, the step in play is to do a budget amendment that reflects more closely our actual enrollment now, the kids now, not the ones that were counted last year. And that's what this does.
Any general questions for Pat? Trustee Lorenzen?
Well, it makes me a little uneasy. The TIF money is one-time-only money. The direct state aid will continue to come. And so, and I know now we're not saying where that money goes. But next time when we hear about the object codes, can we be certain that this is being used for one-time-only expenditures? I know the seatbelts are, but if you build staff with this money, then next year we will have to levy for this money, won't we?
Not necessarily, but it's the right question because when we do the budget amendment for this year, we, the budget projections won't be altered by the budget amendment. So we will still use budget projections that rely upon prior year budget amounts versus proposed budget amounts without this amendment as part of it. So the resolution authorizing the expenditure of the budget amendment will really function as a one-time, on a one-time basis. And then the levy conversation happens independent of this budget amendment, both this year and next year.
Any other questions? Okay, so this is an elementary action item. And the recommendation, is the correct terminology is that the motion would be to approve the attached resolution and the petition for a budget amendment in the amount of $854,540? And that just starts the process? So we're, the trustees who would be voting on it would be just voting on the resolution being published?
Exactly. The resolution and the petition.
The petition. Okay. Does that make sense to everyone? Okay. So is there a motion from a K-12 trustee to approve the attached Resolution 2020-4E and the petition for a budget amendment in the amount of $854,540? Move by trustee Smith. Is there a second? Second by trustee Newbold. Is there any board discussion? Is there any public comment? See none. All K-12 trustees in favor of the motion to approve the attached resolution and petition, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all K-12 trustees present. Then we move on to number five. And so, Pat, because you are our secretary, I guess you receive clerk, I couldn't think of the right word, our clerk, it is appropriate that the letter of resignation from trustee Duggar went through your office. Is that correct?
That's right. Yep. And so the, that action then led to the follow-up application of statute and policy, which is the compulsion really of the board to declare the position vacant and to appoint a successor within 60 days. And so this was one of those policies that we changed to be consistent with statute, kind of right on the heels of resignation. But the policy used to say 72 hours, and now it compels an effective date, which is part of the letter that was submitted. And then the 60-day period to appoint a successor runs after tonight, after the positions declared vacant by the board. The weird timing here is just that, as we saw earlier, the deadline is March 26 for candidates to file. And so even though we're, the board will consider the appointment of someone, and assuming they do appoint someone by that March 13 deadline, which is the 60 days, that person would have to stand election again in May, this coming May, and to fill the remaining term of the trustee's position. So the way the statute reads and our policy reads is that if the trustees aren't able to appoint someone within 60 days, the county soup would take on that role. And then that timeframe would be seriously compressed by virtue of that March 26 filing date. So we have a tight window. The timeline on page 37 was, is an abbreviated timeline from some prior timelines that we've utilized. It really is plugging in dates based upon the statute. So the deadline to submit an application is February 11. There's really no magic there other than giving a little opportunity for the review of the submittals prior to the board meeting on February 25, which would be the regular board meeting. And at that meeting, the interview would take place of the candidates. We have done that on a special board meeting. This is one of those districts that may not generate lots of candidates. And so it's probably something that could be done at a regular board meeting, but of course, that's up to the board to decide. So it's just anticipating that possibility. Then the March 10 would be when the deadline to complete the oath of office and that meeting on March 10 is when the trustee would be seated. And March 26 is the deadline to file for candidacy. So that's sort of the timeframe we're working with. And referenced in the timeline is the posting that begins on page 38. Again, this is a revised posting from a prior vacancy announcement. It can be modified, of course, by the board and/or by the chairperson of the board, however usey fit. The questions begin on the bottom of page 38. The other part of the detail is more housekeeping regarding deadlines and that type of thing. But the questions begin on the bottom of page 38. They run 1 through 10. And those are the questions that mirror those asked in the past for candidates and were submitted as part of the application.
Any questions for Pat? Trustee again.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I'm just curious as to where this gets posted and how we might be reaching out in the Sealy Lake area specifically.
It's come practice for us for our board meetings and other important elections information. We literally post a piece of paper on the front door of the high school, so of all of our schools, but especially at Sealy.
I guess I would be interested in talking about compressing this schedule because it seems like things either happen or they don't. And if we started on the 17th, we could have, two weeks would be the 31st. If we had those applications due by the 31st, we could go over them at our February 11th board meeting. And that way, I think, while the thing is still fresh, we could get through this quite a bit faster, I think. Just my thought.
So just so I understand, the revisions you wanted, trying to figure out, if we look at page 37, trustee Lorenzen, what dates did you want to?
I guess I'd like to hear if anyone else thinks it's a good idea before we get too far into the weeds.
Okay. Trustee Smith?
I think that's the next one point, but I'm wondering, I'm trying to wrap my head around this process. So if I understand correctly, Joe Smith, for lack of a better name, in Sealy Lake runs or wants to take the position, by the schedule we have here, he would be seated on March 10. And then would have to then file to run by the 31st.
No, 26.
Oh, 26th of March, rather. So he or she will be on the board for roughly one meeting and then decide if they want to continue. I guess my other question is, if no one applies or if no one, actually, that's two different questions, but if no one applies, it says that the county will select someone. Does the county have to select someone? Or can we just wait a couple of months until the next cycle?
Yeah, it's a question I posed to the MTSBA council because the statute is shall for you guys. So as a board of trustees, you shall, and in 60 days, appoint. There's a time limit also for the county soup. And my question to MTSBA is, does that time start over if nobody runs for office in May? And I believe it does. And so that position would be declared vacant again after the May 5 election, in which case your 60 days would start running again. And so it doesn't change your burden to make an effort to appoint someone now. But it also, you know, it doesn't, I don't think, give the county soup's office sort of the unlimited time to then appoint someone either. And the compression of the dates might serve to, you know, offer or provide a little more time for the county soup's office to make that effort. But it's more about making that effort to have the appointment happen within those 60 days, that March 13 deadline.
Trustee Decker?
So it would certainly be, what we would hope would be that someone who wanted to apply to be appointed would be interested in serving for the long haul as well. And so I think the idea that we're announcing tonight that this is an opportunity and the idea that we're looking for someone who wants this to be a long-term opportunity and maybe consider that that's something to do, we may not want to only give ourselves two weeks to get the word out and identify that person, which in fact, less than two weeks if we're thinking about compressing the timeline. I think it's less likely that we'll get someone who will hang in there for the long haul, the shorter the time before someone needs to apply right now. So I think, I don't see the benefit of making the timeline faster. It doesn't cost us money to run this right now. And we're going to run the election one way or the other. And so I think giving people in Sealy Lake time to spread the word might not be a bad idea and find someone who really wants to do it.
I'd just like to make a comment on the application in that since I was the last person that went through this process, and I was very put off by having to do 10 questions. And then I saw, I was like, okay. And it was kind of short notice because I just kind of, it took me a while to decide whether I wanted to do it. And so I got them done. And then I had to do more questions. And I was going against no one. So it just, I think it might be better is to like, for the application, just ask for a kind of summary of why they're interested in being it and save the questions for if there are other candidates to go against, is what I would suggest.
Clarify, what questions you think would be most valuable to include in the application form?
Not.
Not any?
Yeah, the first one. Why do you want to do a school?
Okay.
That's it.
Okay.
Yeah, and number 10, one in 10, that's worth it. If you intend to run.
Yeah, that's, I was, would, is that okay with every, I mean, that would be a good recommendation in my personal view. Is that okay with everybody? Trustee Smith or trustee Decker?
I was just going to say, I went through the same process many, many years ago, and it hasn't changed since. So I don't mind it being approved. I think it's a good idea.
Trustee Decker?
But if there are, like, we have had the situation where we had, I think, three applicants in front of us who all were interested in doing it. And at that point, we did, in fact, I-
Then you do the questions then.
Then you do the questions. Yeah, as long as we retain a space where we can, in fact, sit, you know, do that if that comes up.
Say the questions for, here I can.
Yes, I was going to touch on that. So typically, the process is or has been, ask a lot of questions and bring them in and ask a lot of questions again. And the questions are somewhat limited in the sense that you want to make sure each person gets presented with the same questions and the only follow-ups are really relevant to the question asked. So we have, as a group, have to identify the most important questions we want to ask. But if we just already have another eight questions here that we could ask and we can determine at a different meeting, maybe we'll get it down to maybe four questions instead, then that means we can get the general application out more quickly, a better explanation, and you're not as overwhelmed as you can be in trying to answer all 10 questions in a thoughtful manner. So is that okay with everyone? I see nods. So is that something that we need to make an amendment to what's on page 38 and 39? In terms of making a motion?
I think you can. I think typically the action item was declaring the position vacant and making the effort to move forward. But I think these are great comments to throw in there.
So that being said, oh, trustee McDonald and trustee Lorenzen?
Is this a time to ask a question?
About the process?
Yeah. What happens if there's nobody that comes forth that is interested?
Then the county superintendent appoints someone. But she, but she, but Erin Limkin has to find someone to appoint. I think one of the points that Pat was making, and maybe it's somewhat relevant to the timeline, you know, pros and cons, I mean, there's reasons to accelerate the timeline and reasons not to. But no matter what happens, if no one applies and this county superintendent can't find someone to appoint in the timeline, then May 5 comes or the election day comes and we appoint someone to fill that position again. So it's just until we get some person that is interested and that we are willing to approve. So yeah, it's, I think that's what Pat was trying to explain and what Diane was asking about too. And so that's one reason to accelerate it because they have a little more experience on the board. But on the other hand, since it's an outlying area, it would be nice to get the word out to the area because it's Potomac, Sealy District, Clinton, and Sealy Swan. So it's a kind of a long, narrow place. So does that help? Okay. Any other questions? Trustee Lorenzen, sorry.
I guess you brought it up, but with- I guess you brought it up, but we talk about going to Sealy. We need to go to Clinton, make a real effort in Clinton, it's a big community, and also in Potomac. So we need to go to all our schools. I mean, Clinton is not, neither of those are our schools, but we need to go there and make sure they know as well.
Good point. So with that being said, does anyone want to discuss, I mean, I can leave it to someone to make a motion to modify the proposed timeline, and then we can get a second and discuss it, or we can, I mean, I'll take whatever motion someone wants to make in terms of declaring the high school trustee District D post vacant and authorizing the administration to initiate the process for appointment, which I think should include basic deadlines. So is there any motion that anyone wants to make with any kind of deadlines in it?
Well, I guess, I-
This is an elementary.
Okay, if, I mean, if that's, if, if we need to insert deadline language into the recommendation for what we're about to vote on, then I recommend that I make the motion that we, we authorize the administration to initiate the process as outlined in the notes here and to declare the position vacant.
Is there, does everyone understand the motion? Is there a second? You can't second it because it's elementary. Oh, no, it's high school. Sorry, I'm, I'm backwards on this one. So it's seconded by trustee Wake, and I apologize ahead of time for getting that flipped backwards. So is there any board discussion about the motion on the floor? Trustee Smith?
I just, I guess I just want to make sure, and I know that trustee Decker said, if we need to put a deadline on there. So my question is, do we have to put deadlines on there, or can we, can we approve it without the deadlines, or is it our goal tonight to get these dates set?
It would be my preference to have the dates set.
Okay.
Because I, I mean, the more concrete information someone who's considering the position-
So I understand, so I understand the motion to include the dates.
Right.
Thank you. Yes, that's fine. I'm going to support it.
And so the motion does not include requiring any particular questions to be asked, but I, I'm sure the administration is hearing the recommendation in the application form is ask the first question and the 10th question and make the process more accessible to anyone applying. Is that okay with everybody? So we have a seconded motion, and any other board discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none? Oh, sure, yeah.
Just to emphasize that applications would be due into the superintendent's office on February 11th. That's the deadline for the, for the, you know, for public information purposes. That's the deadline that we're looking at.
Right, because trustee Decker's application, resignation came in on the 10th, so that's-
So that's a month.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that okay with everybody? So no public comment, then all trustees in favor of the motion to, let me make sure I get, declare the high school trustee District D position vacant and authorize the administration to initiate the process for appointment following the timeline that's contained in the attachment to the agenda, just the timeline, and everything else is left to the discretion of the administration with recommendations from the board. So all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. And thank you very much for helping me stay on track. Now we move on to the personnel report, and it's found on page 40. This is the routine report we see every month. Dave, is there anything of note?
No, it's a pretty small report, it's a little time of year.
So, any questions for Dave? Sure?
The trustee, the report identifies one of the schools in that column as St. Joe's Teachers. Does that mean St. Joseph's Catholic School?
Yes, it's stipends for tutors. Julie could actually address it more, it's with Title 1A funds.
This is actually, so I oversee Title 1, 2A, and Title 4 for the grant on the instructional side of things. And through our, we are an LEA, the local education agency that acts as the agent for federal funds that come first through the state and then to us. And we have an obligation to take a certain amount off the top to give to qualifying non-public schools. So we cert, we put out an announcement in the spring by law, and local schools can sign up for services under all of our federal grants. And so it's up to them. We approve their plans, their budgets come through us, their staffing comes through us, but they do their own hiring and PD. So this is actually for a job embedded professional development and using funds, federal funds that are flowing through us.
Thanks, good question. Any other questions? Seeing none, then is there a motion to approve the items on the personnel report? Moved by trustee Service and seconded by trustee Lorenzen. Any board discussion? We don't discuss any particular individual in the report, just general discussion? Seeing none. Public comment with the same caveat? Seeing none. Then all trustees in favor of approving the items on the provided personnel report, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Then we move on to B2, which is the Montana High School Association annual meeting proposals. And so superintendent Watson, if you want to explain while we're doing it informationally, is there?
Yes, before I start, we have Dane Oliver here with us this evening. Dane, we just learned from our student trustee that you were named Athletic Director of the Year. Is that correct?
That is correct, thank you. A lot of people contributed to that, so, but thank you.
Thank you. So the Montana High School Association meets annually, and their association meeting is much like the, the school boards association meeting, so it's very similar. Probably the biggest difference is that every high school, every member high school in the state receives one vote. So for example, in our district, we have four high schools. They're all members of the high school association, so they all receive a vote. The other interesting thing is, as you can imagine, the number of Class C or Class B high schools far outnumbers the number of Class AA high schools. So the Class C caucus could band together and outvote the Double As on any of these issues because just like at MSL, they have more votes. So it's an interesting process, and I just, I preface all that because when our, when our high schools go to that meeting, they, again, they do have one vote. They've kind of shown you in the packet how they would intend to vote, but that might change. And let me tell you how it could change, just like at MSL, the, at the high school association meeting, there could be amendments to some of these proposals that causes us to change our vote. And so we would want to give latitude to our, to our representatives to be able to change their vote at the meeting based on an amendment. There's also caucusing at these meetings, so the, the Class C caucus may get together and say, we will support this one if you support that one. And so there's some horse trading, if, I guess, lack of a better word, that goes on at these meetings. And so what I want to tell you is that Dane is here to sort of report on how we believe we would vote when we're there, but it may change when he gets there. And so we just want to give leeway to our activities directors to, to vote the way that they feel is best. But we also want to make sure you understand what the proposals are and then provide an opportunity for you to ask questions about the proposals or ask questions on why we're deciding to vote the way we're voting.
Thanks, Rob. 11 proposals this year, that's the most I've seen in six years of being AD. Met with Cameron Johnson and Nick Latch today, had a good discussion about all these, and always include our Sealy friends as well via email, let them weigh in. So I'm here on behalf of ADs and principals after discussions. I'll kind of spend some more time on the ones I think we need some more input trophies and don't necessarily need a lot of input, but totally open to people's perspective on, when it comes to eligibility. The first proposal was a do not support recommendation vote, deals with transformational learning. Currently, to participate and represent a high school activity, you need to be enrolled in 20 hours. Now, they do have exceptions. You have to be enrolled in 20 hours, which is equivalent to four class periods, but they have to be in the building. We call that brick and mortar for 10 of those. And proposal one wants to eliminate that. The reason why we do not support that, we feel that if you want to represent a high school as an activity, you need to represent them as a student as well. We recognize that a lot of different accommodations take place at our high schools, but there's so much connection that takes place when a student walks through the door, whether that's from their peers, their students, their, their teachers, that's the value of participating in high school activities. So that was a do not support to eliminate this exception where they would have to not come to school at all. So questions on that, input, thoughts?
And just to preface what we've done in the past, in the past, we've had fairly lengthy discussions on all of this. And I think we've come to realize that a lot of things can change once you get there, and for us to have long discussions here might not mirror what kind of discussions are actually going to take place once you're at the meeting. So if you have any questions or suggestions for, you know, for any of the ADs who will be there, other than that, you know, the idea is this is information and we'll assume that they will act in the best interest of their schools and for the district. So anything about this first proposal? Seeing, maybe?
I don't want to get too far into the weeds. I am, this whole transformational learning stuff is sort of new though, and it sounds to me like this proposal is about being in compliance with how the state has changed what they think of as attendance, based on this new transformational learning idea where you might be embedded in the community, doing a job, sort of apprenticeship thing or some other sorts of ways and still meeting your attendance requirements. So it's just confusing how we would not support something that seems to be mandated by law. But again, I don't want to get too far into the weeds, so I'll leave it there.
Yeah, I would just comment that trustee Decker is correct that, that, that things are definitely changing in that direction. My experience with the high school association is it does take a little bit for them to get caught up to where, where we might be headed. So the best example I can give you is that we were, you know, we were doing correspondence and online courses for a long time, and eventually the high school association changed their rules around brick and mortar. So they used to require four clap, four courses in the building, and then they loosened that rule to allow two in the building and two out of the building. What's interesting about this one is the way it's written is that a student essentially wouldn't have to have any connection to the building. They could just be on their own learning, and that, that's something that, that, that I would have a tough time getting my mind around as an educator, just because in order to participate in an activity, you want to be able to, you know, have some sort of connection with the kids, some sort of day-to-day or weekly connection with the kids. So it's not surprising that, that I see a do not support here. I would imagine that the high school association, it probably won't pass just because it sometimes takes a couple of sessions before they get the rule really figured out to where it works. But transformational learning is likely coming down the road, and I think it, it will be here, and, and the high school association will probably have a rule in the future that will make it work a little better.
Thanks. Is there exceptions other than just a strict rule that MHSA takes into account?
As far as meeting the minimum requirement for 10 hours or 20 hours?
Yeah, if, if there was a special case, but I can't think of-
Yes, so say, what we've seen is we've filed hardships on behalf of kids, and we've won those based on extenuating circumstances. So yeah, there is always an option, but, but they stick pretty firm on, on this. So yeah, but there is an appeal process based on life circumstances. Okay, proposal two, currently a homeschool student could not participate in high school athletics. Proposal two, something we do not support as well, I would eliminate that and say that as somebody who was in a bona fide homeschool program could participate at the high school. For the same reasons I spoke about for proposal one, it's the same justification for proposal two, so. The, I think it's the sixth year in a row we've seen the eighth grade participation. That's proposal three. As we've done in the past, three urban schools, Sentinel, Hellgate, Big Sky, all do not support that. We don't have a need for eighth grade participation, but our friends at Sealy do support that. And that's where Rob talked about the four votes, you will sometimes see it. I know last year it was close to passing, so I could see it getting closer each year. So once again, three urban schools do not support that. Sealy does support the eighth grade participation. Comments, questions on that?
Just in case people don't remember the conversations in the past when we've taken more formal positions, we've always taken the position that recommended that you all go vote the way that supports your school. So that sounds pretty consistent with what you're planning on doing anyway.
We didn't caucus for that one. That's what we had last year. So proposal four, amend the award rule by law, essentially basketball team with shooting shirts would be in violation of the MHSA awards rule. So this proposal amends that and allows for those shooting shirts, and we are supportive of that. The proposal five, proposal to amend penalties by law, it's an increasing a penalty for recruiting violation, we were in support of that. Proposal six was to add, I think, the expenses for all the co-ops in the multiple schools with trophies. Essentially, the MHSA says we're only going to supply one trophy for the co-ops, and it's up to the schools to buy the extra trophies, and we, we supported that co-op. Proposal seven is to amend semifinal trophies for football and soccer. Currently, if you make the semifinals in football and soccer, you get a, a trophy. We didn't support that. The Double As did a lot of budgeting with, with those trophies, and we eliminated some for divisional tennis. For example, in divisional tennis, in the Double As, we had three schools participating, and they gave us three trophies, and we thought that was an unneeded expense. But in exchange for cutting those, we said, hey, those, those trophies for advancing for semifinals in soccer and football, we wanted to keep those, but they keep fighting us on it, so we, thank you, Mr. Reddick. He's been a great addition to Sentinel, so I just make sure you pass that word on to him. So, but yeah, so we didn't support the semifinal trophies. Any questions on those? I breezed through those, but like I said, like I said, those are pretty self-explanatory. Proposal eight, the golf coaching rule. Right now, a golf coach can coach from the moment the ball goes in the, in the hole for, after the putt to the tee box. And they, they want to be able to coach all the way up to the green. So essentially, you could have a high school coach, you know, giving some advice, and we know Pat needs some advice on his golf game, so, but give those high school kids some coaching, and we supported that. It's something the golf coaches have been fighting for, for a few years. Proposal nine, to change the format of state volleyball. It's going to mirror this proposal from Glacier High School, mirrors the basketball tournament format. Right now, at a state volleyball tournament, it's a double elimination tournament. So if a team advances all the way to the finals, and then they get upset in the finals, that would be their first loss. They have to turn around and say that, play the same team again, and it's just, it hasn't necessarily, usually the team that makes the finals wins that game, and the data's in there about how many years, and so it's, it's a more efficient tournament, and it's essentially a single elimination tournament, and we are supportive of that new format for state volleyball. Proposal 1011, the big ones, last year when I spoke, we, we asked, one of the proposals was to have a committee look at adding girls wrestling, and the feedback from that was to, to add girls wrestling as an MHSA sanctioned sport. It was a tough one, we had some good- It was a tough one. We had some good, good talks about this, but it's not something we support right now. And the main justification is we're having trouble in some sports fielding girls. And so to add another element, right now, we just didn't feel what was the best for, for our schools. And I will say, you know, at Flathead, I was at a wrestling match and they had four or five girls. And so just right now, where we're at financially and, and participation numbers in our female sports, we just didn't think it was good to add some more competition. And to piggyback to, to come in compliance with Title IX and Ridgway, they added this, the boys' powerlifting. You have to have an equal amount of opportunities for girls and boys, and so that's why we saw that powerlifting, which, you know, was a surprise to me. I thought that was an add-on. So I just feel like some more research needs to be done on a personal level before we can move forward with that girls wrestling as a sanctioned sport. Comments on that?
Okay, no, I'm going off of the weeds. So one of the, I have kids that wrestled, and one of the areas where the girls have an opportunity is in those really low weight classes. It takes a pretty small boy to weigh 98 pounds or something. Have they considered just, you know, adjusting the weight classes just based on the fact that kids maybe are bigger nowadays, and some of these weight classes are so hard to fill?
You know, they, they add it. We are actually, our Montana weight classes are not in line with N.F.H.S. National Federation standards. We have a different standard than the rest of the nation. And I think that was examined 10 years ago. But I, I'm not aware of if that's in the plans to look at those weight classes. I do know that eighth grade wrestling, if, if the Proposal Three passes, you're going to see a lot of eighth graders in 98-pound weight class, so.
And I guess I was, I was going to ask a different question, but I'm assuming if you have to add in powerlifting to keep in line with having an equal number of both male and female sports, then wouldn't the next proposal to add in girls' powerlifting?
So the, the boys...
But I'm saying, just in order to keep it balanced, the proposal is to add in boys' powerlifting.
And I haven't looked, but for the, the boys' powerlifting will only be added if the girls' wrestling passes. So yeah, is that, am I explaining that enough?
Yeah, I understand that. I'm just saying almost facetiously that why can't girls' power lift too? So, anyway.
And that's why I was, it was interesting that they chose the powerlifting as the, as the boys' sport.
So, Mr. Oliver, just to clarify, though, girls can currently participate in wrestling?
Yep, definitely. Girls' wrestling is, is one of the fastest-growing sports in the nation. But just the need, you know, in a perfect world, we'd do it all with unlimited resources, and we, we would do all these. It would be great. But it's just, it's not the, it's not where we're at right now.
I guess I just want to kind of echo what Marshall was saying, and it, with the powerlifting, it doesn't seem as if they've really put much thought into it. If they were going to add a sport, it seems like a, a men's or a boys' volleyball or field hockey might be a more equivalent thing, but because what I was going to say when I went through these with the powerlifting, it, it seems, do they, do they know what season the powerlifting would be? It seems whatever season they have it, it would take students from another sport that wouldn't normally see powerlifting as part of their regiment. So it just seems odd, so I'm glad they were against those.
My frustration was that to add the girls' wrestling, there was a process to go through. And it was, I came here, asked you for permission to do it, and then they just did, they just added it on without going through the process. So either way, I think intentions were good. And we'll see, and there might be amendments, and we'll vote accordingly.
I appreciate, and we appreciate you going and going through this process for us.
So, Mr. Oliver, one thing that might be interesting is, once the votes happened, maybe even submit a written summary of what happened so that we can find out more quickly than waiting for the next year's proposals to come up. Just to be curious about what, you know, what things did move forward and what things didn't. I mean, we wouldn't want to take up your time in coming back again to tell us, because I know you're really busy, but just a written summary would be helpful.
Yeah, and I will say that it's pretty well-covered, and the M.H.S.A. does a lot of the, the written documents, so I can sure, sure get that to you. Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Thank you so much for being here. And congratulations again! So I think we're to the next to last item, which, there we go, is, this is a discussion at this point only. And so the discussion is, we did discuss how to do the evaluations generally at the November 26th meeting, and after that meeting, or perhaps even before, some trustees asked about the timeline, because we've been wedded to a certain timeline, which is not relevant really at this point, because Superintendent Watson has a three-year contract. And so the timeline that kicks in by getting the evaluation done by the first or second of February is only related to someone who's on a one-year contract. And so a question came up as to whether or not we could take additional time to evaluate, to conduct the superintendent's evaluation process. And so one suggestion that came up, and I think it might have come up with in talking with Superintendent Watson, was have a formative evaluation where it's more of a discussion about what things, because it's kind of going along with the parallel of having our strategic planning sessions, what things during this current year would we like the superintendent to focus on and accomplish in terms of kind of forming where the rest of the year goes until July 1st or June 30th, and then actually do the summative evaluation in late April so that what goes into the personnel file is, you know, that my numeric evaluation based on what you fill out on the evaluation tool that we're going to use this year. And so I wanted to throw out for discussion purposes whether people want to do it the way we've been doing it, where it's a one evaluation only and it happens fairly quickly, or we can spread it out and do it in a two-part evaluation process where it provides some guidance to the superintendent about what things are important now, and then kind of looks at what we have been able to accomplish. And the reason I suggest April rather than a later date is because there might be turnover on the board as of May, you know, that first meeting in May. And so we'd want to have the people who've been working with the superintendent over the course of his first year being able to, you know, evaluate him, because we're the most familiar with the process. So I'll throw that out for discussion.
Do I understand right that the February discussion would be a looking forward to the coming school year as well? So a looking forward to all of 2020 and on into 2021? Or looking at the remainder of this school year? And the reason why I ask is that if a formative evaluation's going to be done in like February, really like mid-February, and then the second one about six to eight weeks later, that doesn't make as much sense to me as doing one in like around September, October, and then doing one in around April of next school year.
Yeah, in a different world, if we would have thought it all through, we could have done it that way and had the formative evaluation done much earlier. But, you know, at least for me personally, I was wrapped around the idea that by statute it had to be done just once and on a certain date. And it turns out, once you look closely at the statute. So we've somewhat lost the opportunity to, to have that longer timeline. I would, I mean, me personally, I would fully support that, but we've lost that.
So could we do that next, should we make a suggestion to do one evaluation this year based on our understanding of the job description as we created it and all of that? And then do that process next year, that does something early on in the year that looks forward, and then something toward the end of the year that looks back?
I'm open to any, any thoughts on that as a process where we'll do a single evaluation this year and then a two-part evaluation next year, which is better timed? Any thoughts? Since we each are obligated by law to, you know, engage in this process, I'd love to have your feedback about how, how to do it this year and also going forward, how to do it. And then there's the second part about what evaluation tool we use.
What Grace is saying seems to make sense. But you mentioned that the evaluation in February and the evaluation in April would provide further guidance to the superintendent. So is there just still a way to provide that guidance that would be helpful doing one type of an evaluation and then moving to that two-part for the following school year?
That's what I'm, well, it's up to you, but I, I hear what you were saying is that it would have been a better process had we thought it through as soon as Superintendent Watson was hired to think about how to do the evaluation, since we've lost that opportunity to do one earlier in the process. Just do one this year? Is that what?
Okay, so my question is, it won't provide the guidance that would be helpful? Yes, no? I guess...
It would just simply be an assessment.
Well, in terms of timeline, we, we did put a lot of thought into creating a job description with some really clear sort of guidance around what we expected the person coming into this role to do. We did a lot of thinking around that about a year ago from now. And so some of the language that's in that, we could look and see how that lines up with the evaluation tool that we're currently using, and think of that as what we are reflecting on for evaluating this year, and that might in and of itself be helpful. Strategic planning is starting to happen, and that's also going to feed into thinking about goals for 2020, 2021. And so that may, it may make more sense, once that process has moved along further, to do a true formative assessment at the beginning of the year that kind of sets things out, and then look at, I don't know, this, it seems like we can use the tools we have without trying to rush two pieces into this year.
Okay, so would Trustee Sturbis?
This job description, do we have that somewhere? Okay, that's it. Thank you.
So what I'm, did you want to add something?
Question, so would we try to morph, Grace, are you thinking we would try to morph the job description with our current evaluation tool? Or create a new evaluation tool? Or something along those lines?
So here's, here's what we discussed in November, and I think it still holds true. We'll, we'll keep the current assessment tool. But one of the things that was added on was the components from our current strategic plan that were included, which we never really used, because when superintendent thing came on board, there was a lot of focus on bonding issues, and it was, it didn't always line up with looking at the bigger picture. So we never really talked about that, but we, we have it, and it's part of our current evaluation tool. So if we can combine that with the job description, it sounds like what I'm hearing is do one evaluation this year, and it's done in executive session, but have a discussion just in general terms of measuring against the job description, the current strategic plan, and then keeping in mind that we're working on a new strategic plan for the next at least five years. Does that seem like what people want to do? It was, I have no... I mean, I just want to... Oh, Trustee McDonald?
Okay, I was just, one, just over to the conversation, what time of the, of this year would we look at doing it?
We can do it at any time. That was the one thing that I hadn't recognized and was thinking that we always had to do it, because at a certain point, I think Dr. Apostle was on a one-to-one, a year-to-year contract, so we were always doing it early in the process. You throw, I just threw out dates because I was thinking if we did a two-part process, but if you wanted, we can do it. I would suggest doing it anytime before the election in May. And I don't know if you want to weigh in on when it's the most helpful to get an evaluation?
Yeah.
Or the information from an evaluation?
I'll take guidance and evaluation anytime, so. It doesn't, it doesn't matter to me. I mean, it's, my practice has been around this time of year to, to receive, you know, some feedback, so anytime within the next few months would be fine.
So I guess generally speaking, would everyone be okay with the single, single evaluation in February or March? Want to do it sooner rather than later? Middle rather than way later? So, looking at the dates, would someone want to do it the first school board meeting in February? Or the second school board meeting in February?
We've got the strategic plan on the second meeting
Oh, that's right.
plus the possible interviewing of a new trustee, so.
Okay, so first of February or first of March probably makes the most sense.
And if we want to revise the tool that we're using in any way to bring language from the job description into it, or make sure that it still makes sense with it, it might make sense to have that, have everybody look at that once before we actually do the session and give people a chance to, if we do it the way we've done it before, where everybody writes on their own and then brings that to the session, we might need to think about the March.
February or March? And the second topic, which is under C1, is to look at the evaluation form and see if we want to redo it. So in fairness to the superintendent, he's been told that this is the, you know, the format, the tool that should be evaluated against, so I would be hesitant to change it substantially, but I think you're right. In the process of doing this with the job description, current strategic plan, and now starting to think about what the new strategic plan goals are going to be, we'll, we can actually have a separate topic to discuss how we want to modify, if at all, the form, because I know Ann and I, and I was thinking someone else, Trustee, Wake and I, and Mike, we looked at a number of evaluation tools and ended up coming up with this one. But after you use it for a while, you can sometimes see where you'd want to change it. So, so yes, I envision that at some point that's going to be a topic to discuss what's, what it's going to look like going forward. But in fairness, you know, to everyone, since that's what everyone was told we'd be looking at this year, it seems to be safest to do it that way. So, February, March? I don't, any suggestions?
There we go. My preference would be March, and I think that makes a lot of sense for what you're saying about getting it done before we potentially lose some, some trustees from this year. And also, it gives us, you know, another month or whatever, because we just don't have that much to work with. And I, picking up on, I think it was Trustee Sturbis who, who asked about the evaluation, or the job description. Can we get access to that somehow, like get it posted on the website or get it emailed to us, or? I mean, I don't know what makes the most sense, but it would be great to look at it again.
I, I had a file with, which it was in, and I'm hoping I still have that file at home. But I think, I'm sure we can find it and we can make it available. I think sending out to the trustees makes the most sense, because we're the ones doing the evaluations. It's, I'm sure if anyone requested it, it would be made available to anybody, but yeah. But I, I'm thinking we can get it perhaps sooner rather than later. So I'm hearing March, first, or Trustee McDonald?
I don't know what day in March you'd be doing it, but I am going to be gone March 10th through the 15th. And that's the second, that's the second Tuesday in March.
Trustee Smith?
I was just going to say, is this going to be some, because I'm not sure about my availability, could I provide feedback written, right? I mean, obviously, we could do it other ways, right?
Yeah, people, people who can make meetings have always provided written feedback. That's, the form allows for that, so. So we can either do it March, at the end of March, and remember, we're moving that meeting to the 31st of March. So is the 31st of March where most people feel like you can make it? Okay, so with that being decided, it doesn't take emotion or anything, it's just kind of the structure of things. But the idea will be that we'll add in the superintendent's evaluation in March. We will get the job description out to everyone sooner rather than later. I've got a copy of the evaluation form I can send out again if everyone just needs to see it and hasn't saved it from past years. And I think that's all we need to have out there. And so that earlier you start at least looking at those things... And so that earlier you started at least looking at those things, I know it's always, when it was done so quickly, you were coming out of the holidays and suddenly doing this evaluation, and didn't take perhaps as much time as we could have to fill it out, because we were trying, or I thought we were trying to comply with state law, which actually we didn't need to. So, so March 31st will be, at the end of that meeting will be the superintendent's evaluation. Okay? Does that summarize what everyone's okay with? And there will be a, a later discussion about rethinking the evaluation tool. Okay? With that, that's the last item on the agenda, other than public comment at the end of the meeting. Any public comment on non-agenda items at the end of the meeting? Seeing no one racing to the podium, we're adjourned. Thank you very much.